If it's red, it's on.
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 Hello. Okay, there we go. All right. Thank you for the wonderful introduction and good evening, members of the city council and mayor. We are so excited here to provide an update on everything we have going on at the COG. I'm Katie Ward again. I'm joined with Ricky Choi, Nicholas Rue, and Victoria from our team to provide you these updates tonight. Before we jump into the updates, I did want to give an acknowledgement to our COG leadership. So we have Tim Hepburn, who is our president, and he's from the city of Laverne, Ed Reese from the city of Claremont, our first vice president, April Verlato from the city of Arcadia, second vice president, and then last Corey Moss from the city of Industry, who is our third vice president, and happy to say that they were recently reappointed this year. All right, now getting into the programs. And we have so, so many programs, as you can see from our presentation, if you received the advanced copy. But we won't go over each individual program, but each of the slides basically has different categories of programs, and then a list of them, and just to highlight a few. So to jump into our sustainability and environmental programs, we have so many different things that we like to do in the region to further sustainability goals as an agency and for the region. And just to highlight one, the SOCA REN Energy Program. SOCA REN stands for Southern California Regional Energy Network for short. And this program provides public agencies access to financing and incentives to do different upgrades to city facilities in terms of energy efficiencies. So thinking about it in terms of LED lighting, you could do that, or an upgrade to HVAC through a Parks and Rec Department. So definitely different resources for cities to access to improve sustainability goals while also saving money on those upgrades. Next category of programs is our transportation and capital construction program. So we have many different transportation programs, as you can see, listed. Again, just to highlight a few, is our SGV Regional Bike Share Program. This program provides San Gabriel Valley residents access to long-term rental of electric-assist bikes, again, as a way to provide different mobility options to our residents in the San Gabriel Valley. And then moving on, we have so, so many programs for our housing and homelessness. And again, just to focus on the photo you see there in the middle, this is a picture of our tiny home bridge housing site in the city of Baldwin Park that essentially provides bridge housing or interim housing for vulnerable residents while they get on waiting lists to get into more permanent affordable housing options. So again, this is in partnership with our regional housing trust, and we're just really proud of the work that we do. And that leads us to our last category of programs is these different services and programs that we provide to our most vulnerable neighbors in need. So again, we offer everything from homeless outreach programs to address homelessness, as well as our SGV Care Mobile Crisis Mental Health Program. And then, as you can see in this photo, our Village 143 program actually coordinates different donation drives of household items. This year, we did a spring cleaning event where we collected donations for cleaning supplies. And we work in conjunction with community groups, and the one you see pictured here is the U.S. Chinese Women's Association, who made a very generous donation. And then kind of tying back to our tiny homes, these supplies actually go to those sites, again, to give access to those valuable resources. So again, I know I sped through a lot of those different programs. So if you have any questions on any individual program, happy to answer any questions on those. But again, just to be respectful of your time, we're just giving very brief overview. So now I'm going to hand it off to Nick to give an overview of our 2023-24 accomplishments.
So thank you, Katie, and good evening, council members. So our COG agency was really busy in the last fiscal year. We completed and broke ground, or we broke ground on two different road-grade separation projects, which are helping improve circulation and traffic safety in our region. We also opened three food recovery hubs, which are really great organizations that are recovering food from organizations that would send to waste, and providing that food to food insecure populations. We've also provided homeless outreach services to over 1,900 people last year, last fiscal year, and also housed 88 clients that way. And through our regional housing trust, which is SGV RHT, we are also promoting affordable homeownership opportunities throughout our region. And as part of the council of governments, all of our cities receive different types of benefits or services. In particular, for the city of San Gabriel, I wanted to highlight that we are helping host an Open Streets event next June, and this will be called Mission at Twilight. And kind of like I mentioned earlier as well, the city of San Gabriel is also a participant in our homeless services programs. And through an organization called the CADA, that organization helps provide a lot of proactive outreach to people who are currently experiencing homelessness. One other thing we also wanted to mention about the city of San Gabriel, too, is that through our regional housing trust, we were able to help procure a property called 405 South Del Mar. This is going to be the city's first affordable housing project, and ultimately, when it's done, it's going to help provide affordable housing to 73 seniors. And it's a really exciting partnership ultimately, because the regional housing trust's financing opportunities have really helped leverage this property. And looking forward ahead, we're trying not to lose steam. We have a lot of goals and projects that we're trying to finish. In particular, we have two regional plans that we're wrapping up this fiscal year, which includes our broadband regional plan, as well as our wildfire protection plan. I think a lot of you are aware, too, that we have the 2028 Olympics coming up in the next four years or so. And through a program called Jump Start, we're going to do a lot of bus corridor improvements throughout our region. We also awarded $6 million in loan funds that are really going to continue supporting the construction of more and more affordable housing units. And also through our regional housing trust, we're also utilizing funds to permanently house more and more individuals and support more and more earned room housing, all to help the homeless crisis. This slide here is just our policy committee wall of fame. So our COG agency would not be able to do what it could do without the legislative and policy leadership of a lot of our committees. In particular, I wanted to highlight two individuals that are here right now. One is your city manager, Mark Lozaretto, who has currently served in our city manager steering committee, as well as your council member, Tony Ding, who has pulled double duty by serving as a member on both our Energy, Environment, and Natural Resources and Water Committee, that's the E and R one, as well as our Transportation Committee. So just want to thank you both for your service. And that concludes our presentation. So rapid take any questions, and thank you again for your time.
Well, thank you very much. Does any colleague have any question for this presentation? No? Well, thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, just feel free to email us.
You're welcome. Thank you. So, Clark, next item, please.
Public comment. This is the time set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the San Gabriel City Council. If you wish to address the council, please fill out a speaker's card and give it to the clerk. Our first speaker this evening is Erlinda Romo.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and city council members. I'm here to, first of all, thank the women's division for their sponsoring of the upcoming October 3 candidate's forum, which will be held at the Padiobro at 6:30. This candidate's forum is going to be moderated by the League of Women Voters, which is nonpartisan. They don't have any views on any particular candidate that's running. But this is an opportunity to see and hear all five candidates. Forums like this not only inform the electorate, but they also build community and make our city better and stronger. I'm requesting that the city post something on social media. They have not thus far. So if the city can post something, or council members individually to promote this event, that would be great, because the more people we have, the stronger our community is. Let the people decide for themselves and make informed decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Chastity Jennings Nunez.
Good evening. It's been a while. But I just wanted to share a few thoughts that I, you know, just witnessed the peaceful, respectful celebratory transfer of power from the current president of Mexico to the new president of the United States of Mexico, President Claudia Scheinbaum. There was every shade of pigment in the audiences that were present to celebrate her inauguration. And with all of that diversity, the pride that they had in being a citizen of Mexico that united them was palpable. The new president is not only a woman, she is Jewish in a country that is 80% Catholic. The U.S. would like to hold itself out as the enlightened leaders of the world. But every day, we see examples from other countries of what progress and sophistication looks like. We will have an election in a little over a month, and as Erlinda stated, there is going to be an opportunity on Thursday at 6:30 to ask questions and hear responses from the five candidates running. And I hope that people will participate in that. As a former here commissioner, I obviously have a lot that I can share with people about the loss of the commission for our city. But honestly, I've been thinking about it, and the biggest loss that I can think of is that you took seven incredibly engaged volunteers who promoted our city, who are willing to donate their time, their talents, and their finances to support our city, and you really disengaged them. So I hope that with this next election, round of elections, that our new council people will come in and recommit to that engagement, starting with allowing online comments to be read during the meeting. I understand the need to limit them, that we can't have three hours of online comments. I think it is reasonable to limit them to a certain amount of time, 30 minutes. But all comments that did be submitted and available during the minutes are available in the minutes for people to review. It is not fair that they just go to the city council members, and that they're the only ones who can evaluate what our citizens think. Finally, in case I'm not here later, just a brief, there are 10 propositions that are up for evaluation and for vote. I think it's very interesting, the one that you chose, and hopefully I will speak about that more at that agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no more speaker cards.
Okay. So next item, please.
Consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered routine, and recommendations will be approved in one motion unless a member of the city council or public requests separate discussion. We have not received a request from the public to pull an item.
Thank you. Would any council member like to pull an item for separate discussion? I see none. So do I have motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, motion made by Vice Mayor Menchaca.
One second.
Second by Councilmember Harrington. Please vote. The traditional way.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
Public hearing. Ordinance number 710, amending the Valley Boulevard's specific plan relating to ground floor office use and establishing minimum densities. Introduction and first reading.
So I now open the continued public hearing. Planning Manager Samantha Tewasart will make this presentation.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. The item before you is the Value Boulevard Specific Plan Amendment. That's SPA 24-001, again, relating to ground floor office use and establishing minimum densities within the Value Boulevard Specific Plan area. This item is a This item is a continued public hearing item from the September 17th city council meeting. And at the meeting, the proposed text amendment was presented to the city council. The city council discussed the amendments and directed staff to modify the number of tenant units to increments of five and concurred to remove the limitation on units that front Valley Boulevard. And those comments are reflected in the attached ordinance. If the comments are accurately reflected, then the recommendation before the city council this evening, again, is to conduct a public hearing or to continue the public hearing on the proposed ordinance number 710, waive the full reading, and introduce ordinance number 710 by title only. And that's an ordinance of the city council of the city of San Gabriel, California, amending the Valley Boulevard's specific plan relating to ground floor office use and establishing minimum densities, and to waive future reading of the ordinance and schedule the second reading and adoption of the ordinance for the next regular city council meeting. The ordinance would then become effective 30 days after the adoption. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Samantha. Does any council member have any questions for staff to clarify? I see none. So Chief City Card, do we have any speaker card? Okay. So now I close the public hearing. It's time for councils deliberation and discussion. Who would like to start? Oh?
I guess I'll start real briefly. There was a change from our last discussion. So I'm not sure, Mark, can you just kind of share? It's on, I believe it's in the ordinance stating about the planning commission presenting as opposed to, can you just explain it?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Manchaca and members of the council. Yes, there has not been a change since our discussion two weeks ago. The change came from when the council first heard this item several months ago and asked us to bring forward that, that ordinance through the planning commission and to the council. When council had that discussion several months ago or several weeks ago, the direction was to look at limiting office to the units that were not on Valley Boulevard specifically, out on the sidewalk or that with storefronts that faced Valley Boulevard. And so staff put that together and presented that to the planning commission. When the planning commission heard that item and discussed it, they felt that it should be more flexible, that there shouldn't be a prohibition on only the non-Valley Boulevard facing units. And so the, the planning commission recommended that that be taken out. In the ordinance we presented to council two weeks ago, that was taken out, and council discussion was to leave that out. But I do want to make sure that everybody understands that. That was the planning commission direction, and council was presented with that last time. So if you adopt what's presented to you tonight, it has the change of allowing it on Valley Boulevard, not only for the units that are in the back of those centers, but also the ones that have storefronts on Valley. And then the very slight change that the council directed last time, which was to add an ability to do us one more unit in each of those centers. So we added the tiers from one to five, six to 10, and so on.
Thank you for that clarification.
So any other colleagues? No? Samantha, just a quick questions about the second floor. I'm sorry, just call you back. Well, the second floor already, if there's the property, the second floor has already few offices you need, does that affect the quota for the first floor?
It does not. This amendment applies to the ground floor level.
And that's, are medical tenants such as like dental office and family doctors treated just the same as other business office? Or they are serviced like a facial or injection administered by the licensed physician would be considered a different category?
They're considered similar to medical offices.
Medical offices, but that is permitted on the first floor as well?
With the amendment, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So my part is done. So any, so if not, then make a motion on which one?
Okay. I'm sorry.
It took me a while, too.
We already, and thanks to the staff for the report. So I just want the moving the, the staff recommendation. It's one, two, three, right? That's continuing.
It's one, two, or three. I think that's the number three.
Does it need to be read?
No, waive the future reading or?
No, I meant the recommendation. I always get confused. That's what I'm asking. Does he have to read it, or can you just say recommendations, one, two, three?
He does not. He can say that, he just moves the staff recommendation.
Mm-hmm.
I'll second.
Okay. So the motion by Councilmember Ding and second by Vice Mayor Manchaca. Please vote.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
We have no continued business this evening. New business is general fund preliminary financial results for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. Finance Director Cola Hula will make the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. It is my pleasure to present the preliminary financial results for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2004, our fiscal year 2324. This is the preliminary financial results as these numbers are not audited. The financial, our, our financials are currently being closed out, and then they'll be audited here in the next month, and it'll be finalized in December and presented to council in January. But preliminarily, fiscal year 2324 financially was a positive year for the city's general fund. Here are some of the preliminary financial highlights. We had a net change in fund balance. We had an increase of $4.67 million. This is the sixth year in a row that we've had a positive net change in fund balance. Our general fund revenues were slightly higher by $233,000 to nearly $54 million. In '22, '23, we had large increases in our major revenues. And then in '23, '24, we saw slight decreases in, in the leveling off of our revenues in '23, '24. Our general fund expenditures were significantly lower by $4.2 million. This was primarily caused by, in '22, '23, we paid off, we did the early payoff of the Citizens Business Bank loan in the amount of $5.8 million, which decreased our, our debt and also decreased our interest costs. And then our unrestricted reserves. So with the increase of $4.67 million in our, in our fund balance, that brings us to a total of 24, 20.4 million. And this gives us an unrestricted reserve percent increase from 29.5% in '22, '23 to 41.5% in '23, '24. So now we'll look at some of the details in the next slides. So moving on to the net change in fund balance. As mentioned earlier, we had an increase of the $4.67 million increase. Revenues of $53,840,000 less the expenditures of the $49,173,000. This is the sixth year in a row that we've had a positive net change in fund balance. And here's a historical look from fiscal year 1920 through the projected 2324. So 1920, we had a slight positive of $85,000 while we were in the midst of COVID. 2021, we got the first injection of our one-time ARPA money, as well as the measure SG sales tax, kind of the tail end of it, that was passed in March 2020. And then '21, '22, we got a full year's worth of measure SG plus the second tranche of the ARPA money. So we had the big net change in fund balance of $10.3 million. '22, '23, slight increase of $200,000, but as the council knows that we paid off the Citizens Business Bank loan in '22, '23 of $5.8 million, decreasing our debt and also decreasing our interest costs in '23, '24, somewhat more of a common year net projected increase in our fund balance of $4.7 million. So looking at our revenues. So as, as mentioned earlier, we had a slight increase of, in our revenues of $233,000. Our major revenue source taxes was lower by $686,000, and this is where we saw the, a big jump in '22, '23. And then '23, '24, it's gone down a little bit. The decreases we're seeing in our utility user tax, our measure SG, our state sales tax, and our transient occupancy tax, whereas our other, our other major taxes, property tax, property tax in lieu of vehicle licenses fees were, were mostly stable. On the positive side, licenses and licenses and permits were higher by $762,000. We saw growth in our building permits, plumbing permits, electrical permits due to some major projects paying for permits. Charges for services were also higher by $622,000, and this was driven by growth in plant checking, fire services, and ambulance fees. Other revenue was actually, actually a positive year in other revenue. There is, even though it says it went down by $763,000, there is a governmental accounting entry for capital lease revenue. Anytime we, we have a capital lease, it counts as revenue. That's why it's lower. But actually, it was a good year for us. This was the year we sold our Prop A funds. So we got $375,000. Every even year, we sell Prop A funds. We also had one-time safekeeping revenue of $423,000. Our workers' comp reimbursements were higher by $272,000, and we had a one-time sale of city property of $95,000. And then just some, here's, here's just some historical charts of our major revenue sources. So you could see taxes from '21, '22, the big jump in '22, '23, and then back to '23, '24, kind of like a, a stable growth. Just the projection is, you can just kind of see the projection from '21, '22 to '23, '24. And then licensing and permits, charges for services, really driven by activity. And then we do increase the rates to keep up with the Consumer Price Index, with the change in the Consumer Price Index. And then finally, our intergovernmental, '21, '22 is where we had the, the, the final tranche of the, of the ARPA money. And then '22, '23, '23, '24, we just have some governmental grants and some governmental reimbursements that we receive. Then moving on to general fund expenditures. So overall, general fund expenditures were, were under budget by nearly $2.7 million at $49,173,000. You can see at the last line capital outlay, it's under budget by $784,000. So we do have some of that budget that's going to be carried forward for the next year, some capital projects that didn't get completed in '23, '24, so they will be carried over to '24, '25, and we'll take that into consideration when we bring our first budget update next month. We also had budget savings due to our vacancy savings. We do take advantage of some CalPERS savings. If you pay the unfunded accrued liability by July 31st, they give you a 3.4% discount. So that saved us some budget money, and there were just other budget savings from departments spending less money than budgeted. And then when we compare '22, '23 to '23, '24 projected, the actual to the projected, so our expenditures were lower by $4.2 million, and that was primarily due to the paying off of the Citizens Business Bank loan in '22, '23. So here is our, historically from 1920 through 2324, the general fund expenditures, you know, so each year expenditures are going to go up by a little bit. You know, our largest expenditures are personnel cost. So it's going to be driven by COLA increases and step increases. And then depending on how, how CalPERS does, then it, it could also increase our expenditures. And then the incremental changes we make to our operations, adding some new positions or some new solutions and, and equipment and capital expenditures and stuff like that. So our, moving on to our unrestricted fund balance, our contingency reserves and our committed fund balance. So, so our unrestricted fund balance total amount, we have $20,431,000. So in accordance with our contingency reserve policy, we, we assign 20, 25% of our general fund expenditures are, the amount of 25% of our general fund expenditures are assigned to our contingency reserves. So we have the 25% contingency reserve fund balance of $12.2 million. And then the remainder of the fund balance is committed for funding our OPEB, as well as our capital replacement. These are things like infrastructure, air conditioners, roofs, building replacement, things like that. So we have, and then is, and then also our OPEB liability. So we commit the $8.1 million remainder of fund balance for these large expenditures that we know that will, that will be coming up in the future. So then here is a historical look of our unrestricted fund balance from 1920 through 2324. So 1920, we were at the negative $8.1 million, as the city council knows, because we committed a large portion of our fund balance to secure the Citizens Business Bank loan. And then as we had the positive net changes in fund balance, tightening the belt and, and looking for additional revenue sources, we, we were able to work ourselves out from the negative $8.1 million all the way to '23, '24 of a $20.4 million. And then here's a, here's another, here's another look. So this is our unrestricted general fund percentage. So it's a percent of general fund expenditures that we have in unrestricted revenue. So this is our, this, this percentage amount is a key figure for our bond rating as, as well as the city's financial health. Our minimum amount is 25%, and you can see the increase all the way to '23, '24. It's at 41.5%. So just summary and next steps. So just reiterating some of the highlights, our unrestricted fund balance reserve percentage increased to 41.5%. We have met our 25 contingency reserve goal. We have $8.14 million in fund balance is committed to OPEB funding and capital replacement. We, our fund balance increased by $4.67 million to $20.4 million, and this is the sixth year in a row where we've had a positive net change in fund balance. And then our next step, so we're completing the closeout of the financials. We will have auditors in here beginning next week, first looking at our MTA funds, and then at the end of October, we will, we will have our financial auditors. From after the audit, we will prepare the annual comprehensive financial report, which will be audited. And, and then in January, we'll be presenting the final audited financial report to the city council. So that concludes the presentation. I can take any questions you may have.
Well, thank you very much, Will. This is amazing that we can have such a great performance on our financial, that especially from 29.5% to 41.5%, and now we are a fund balance increased by $4.67 million. This is amazing. Thank you very much for that. So does any council member have a question for Will to clarify the report? Yes, yes, council member, Chin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Will, great job on the presentation and the, and the report. Very clear, very easy to understand. Thank you to you and your staff. And second, I wanted to thank all the city staff and my colleagues for being so disciplined over the last few years to get us to this point where we're in a good position and moving in a good position, in a good direction. Just a small technical question for me. If you have the staff report that came with the, the agenda packet, read page three, that, you know, doesn't, that page doesn't matter. It's just that there's an item that you call safekeeping revenue, and I wasn't, can you kind of real quickly explain what that means or?
Yeah, this, this was, this is revenue that is held by the, it's basically evidence money that's held by the police department. And I think over a certain amount of time, it gets adjudicated. It's been accumulating, and so it's reached the point where that the money could be taken into the general fund.
Oh, okay. That's good. So it's, okay. So when, when the cops do the raids and things, and then there's certain laws and rules as to how long the city must keep it in separate evidence before it's allowed to just be used by the city?
Yes, council member, exactly.
I see. Thank you. I appreciate that. I think that's all for me, so I yield, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Chin. Anyone else? Anyone else?
No.
You don't want to try the new microphone? No, I?
I'll say something after.
Sure. Okay. So I have a question, Will. So I, I understand that you mentioned that next week, we will have a, we will have that audited, right? But in your report, you said once all necessary journal entries has been processed and the accounting books officially closed, the city financial data will be under a comprehensive audit. So could you please confirm if there's any significant expenditures that have not been recorded yet?
Yes, Mayor. So in the preliminary report, you know, it is a challenge to present it at this time because there, there are revenues that are kind of lagging, and they're coming in as late as, you know, even in September. And so we are, you know, looking at the history. So we're doing some estimates, and so we're, but for the most part, we've kind of looked in all directions to make sure that we picked up at least the good portion of the revenues and, as well as any expenditures that may be out there, discussing with departments if they may have some invoices. So as far as revenues and expenditures, 99%, we feel like we've picked up pretty much all of the revenues and expenditures, but, you know, we will have the auditors here looking at all of the transactions. They may have some adjusting journal entries that, that could potentially change, change some of the numbers. And, and then there are some additional journal entries that we need to do to get our, our books ready. We need to bring some accruals on to our books, bring on the, the lead balances and, and, and other types of journal entries, but that we don't believe will have a significant impact on the revenues and expenditures.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And the report highlights that certain department underspent their budgets due to the vacancies. So which departments were most affected by these vacancies? And has that been impact our city's operation?
You know, it's always usually in the police department that has the largest vacancy savings, police department and the fire. And, you know, it's, and as far as impacting operations, at least from my perspective, that the police chief and, and the, the team in the fire, in the police department and the fire department are able to, sometimes there's more overtime costs that are incurred because of the, the vacancies. But overall, I don't, I don't think it really impacts operations.
Okay. Well, yes, Mark.
I would agree with Will. The only thing I would add is that the services to the community have not been depleted, but our officers and our firefighters are, are working more than they ever have and fulfilling that overtime, and they're not able to take vacation and, and other leaves that they're entitled to. So while it is true that the public isn't seeing a downturn in that service, our, our officers and firefighters are. Our police chief will be given an update of that at our next council meeting, and he'll be talking about the state of our department and some of the challenges and opportunities that we have facing us, so we'll give you a much more in-depth look at that.
So, Mark, that means the PD and fire now is short of staff?
Yes. All of our departments, all of our departments have vacancies. Our PD is the most affected. Our fire has vacancies as well, although it hasn't hit them as hard to the firefighter level as it has to the, to the officer on the street level.
Okay. Thank you. It's kind of echo, right?
I think we have two of them on her, huh?
No? Is it better? I don't really, sounds like my voice. There's a little change, but, okay. And my next question is, the report notes that some constructions and equipments appropriations will be carried forward to the next fiscal year. So could you please specify which capital projects being delayed and maybe let us know whether this delay will affect the city services?
Yeah, we had about $500,000 in capital projects and equipment that we budgeted in '23, '24. And the, the, the large items were things like roofs. So they weren't completed in '23, '24. So those budgets will be carried forward to '24, '25, and then anticipated that those projects would complete, be completed in '24, '25.
Okay. So there's no such impact to, to our community?
No, no impact, yeah. No impact to the community.
And considering the potential future decline in taxes, because this time I can see the taxes are declining, and so such like a transient occupancy tax and utility user tax. So what strategy are in place for, you know, to diversify the city's revenue streams and mitigate this potential reduction?
I think, you know, we, we do the best we can as far as taking care of our revenues. We, we do keep our, our rates up with the Consumer Price Index, so that's, that's one thing that we can, we have control over. We are diversified to a large degree, where our property taxes are a much more stable revenue source. And as assessed values go up and properties are exchanged, the, the revenue goes up, and I think we're looking at over 5% for '24, '25, and that's, that's pretty consistent, where sales tax, transient occupancy taxes, and utility user taxes are, are a little more volatile. So I think as far as taxes is, you know, just having that diversification helps that when it goes down, it doesn't go down as much because we have other taxes going up. And then there's those years where it, it goes up quite, quite a bit that we saw in '22, '23.
I see. Well, thank you very much, Will. Well, then Chief City Card, do we have any speaker cards?
No public comment, Mayor.
Okay. So it's now, it's now the time for us, for council discussion, who would like to go first? Yes, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Will, I just wanted to ask you, we keep referring to unrestricted reserves. Do we have any restricted?
Really, we don't have any, any of our reserves are restricted. If, if we do, it'll just going to be a tiny amount, maybe tens of thousands.
Okay. Because when you see unrestricted, you expect restricted also. It's kind of a, a natural.
Right. We had restricted for a long time when we pledged our, our, our general fund to secure the loan. So then when we said, okay, we're going to use 9 million to secure a loan, then, okay, then now that, that portion of our general fund was restricted. We couldn't use it because it was restricted to secure the loan. But now that the loan has been eliminated, there is, there is really no restrictions on our general fund.
Okay. That's what I was probably thinking of, because I, I thought I've seen restricted reserves. Also, I, I just want to emphasize to my colleagues as well as the public, the fact that we have a 41.5% reserve is pretty amazing. I, I, you know, our minimum standard for cities is 17%. Our, our reserve policy that we change that escalates every year, for this fiscal year, 2023, 2024, is 25%, and we're still above. So it is quite an accomplishment. And so I want to thank you, because I know you lead it, obviously Mark does too, but, but thank you so much for really, you know, taking care of our, our city and our, our financial health, because we have had some struggles in the past, but we're in a very solid position. So, so thank you so much. That was all.
If I could make a point, Vice Mayor. So you see in the chart that our increase started in 1920, fiscal year 1920, July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020, and we've just been going up from there. And then our city manager was hired in February 2020.
What a coincidence. So, but, but thank you to all of you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Vice Mayor. And any other colleagues would like to say something or any question? No? And there's no vote required. We just received the report. Thank you very much. And next item, please.
Consideration to support Proposition 36, the Homelessness, Drug Addiction and Theft Reduction Act, Resolution Number 24-54. City Manager Lazaretto will make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I will keep my comments very brief tonight. This item was put on at the request of Mayor Wu. I believe he has had conversations that he will talk to the council about from various groups that have reached out to ask the city for formal support for Proposition 36. Proposition 36 is an attempt to undo some of the negative impacts that are perceived from Prop 47 that was adopted in 2014. And well, Prop 47 had some noble goals of reducing people that were incarcerated and some of those minor crimes. Well, that's probably a word that is a little bit too general, but those crimes that people will consider as minor, and having that affect somebody's life for the rest of their life, having felonies. Some of the impacts, though, that we've been seeing over the last 10 years are related to the repeat drug offenses and the smash and grab robberies and that $950 limit for it being a misdemeanor versus a felony. So with that, the public has put on Prop 36, or there's a sponsorship group that has put on Prop 36, that would bring back some of those felonies and, and allow some of those retail thefts to be charged, especially for those repeat offenders. I will leave it up to the council and the voters to decide whether that's good or bad. I will say that there are, League of California Cities is supporting Prop 36. A few cities in our neighborhood have as well. Arcadia and Rosemead both had, back in the signature gathering phases of Prop 36, they provided letters of support. Laverne has come out and supported Prop 36, and I know the city of Lakewood has as well. So with that, I will turn it over to Mayor Wu if you wanted to augment any of my comments. And that we've provided a resolution that the council can adopt if you are in support of Prop 36. The city will not be doing anything with that other than making a note in our normal recap of our council actions. It's not something we would use to promote or anything like that. Council members could at your individual basis, as you could support on your own, even if the council decides not to support Prop 36. Any individual council member can support or oppose any proposition using your name as an individual council member. And so with that, Mayor Wu, if you have anything to add, please.
Well, thank you very much, Mark, for the, for the report. And before we address the questions to Mark and myself, then I would like to provide a brief report to explain why I'm bringing this up, Proposition 36 for discussion. When I have received calls from our resident and business owners all the time, it's about the serious crimes in our community, including home break scenes, burglaries of restaurants, even new opened ones, and the robberies at pharmacies in our city. Additionally, that one of our police cars was hit and an officer was injured. And I personally witnessed many of these terrible moments captured on civilians' footage. And sometimes I think the language used in ballots, on, in ballots of positions can be really confusing, leading to misunderstanding. People may think that they are voting no to oppose something when in fact, a no vote supports it. So to ensure that I fully understood Proposition 36, I consulted with a prosecutor from the LA County District Attorney Office and some of my legal advisors, and after careful review, I'm very confident that this is the right proposition for, for me and maybe my colleagues to support. Many community members, they have expressed that they don't feel safe or adequately protected by the law. Since Proposition 47 passed in 2014, drug overdoses have increased, homelessness has risen, and the theft has become more widespread. So Proposition 36 would give judges the authority to require treatments for individuals with multiple drug offenses. It also aims to help those who still to support their addictions get treatment they need, making our community safer and protecting businesses and giving people a real chance to recover. And yesterday, I attended a press conference in Venice in support of the Proposition 36, where I met Mayor Matt Han, Manhan from San Jose, LA council members Tracy Park and John Lee, Mayor Phil Brock from Santa Monica, former federal prosecutor Nathan Huckman, and a representative from LA City Fire. Local businesses also shared their experience. And I want to bring this to my colleagues for further discussion, and I urge you to support the city of San Gabriel in endorsing Proposition 36. So that concludes my report. And does any colleagues has any questions to Mark or to me? No? So Chief City Card, do we have any speaker cards?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you, Mark, for clarifying how this agenda, I ended up on the agenda. And I have to say that I am surprised and a bit disappointed that it was from our mayor, Mayor Wu. As I mentioned before, there are 10 propositions for consideration by our voters. There's propositions for everything from funding our public schools and community colleges to save drinking water and wildfire prevention, propositions that support affordable housing and raising the minimum wage. Yet Mayor Wu decided that this one proposition was the one that he was going to bring forth to an agenda item, even though it is 100% inconsequential and just a display, pretending that this agenda item will in any way benefit the citizens of San Gabriel. Even if you support Proposition 36, and I want to make it clear that I do not, whether or not any member of this council or the city council supports it is really meaningless. The fact that you can create, can create a completely fictitious resolution with statements like the first one on your resolution that says the pass, passage of Proposition 47 in 2014 led to an increase in organized retail theft and difficulty convincing people to seek drug and mental health treatment with absolutely no evidence for that statement should really be criminal itself. At the very least, it's unethical. As your own staff report states, the proposition is a response to Proposition 47 that was passed over a decade ago. Crime and violent crime in particular has been on the decrease until fairly recently in the last few years. And while the crimes that you mentioned are significant and serious, there is no evidence that this proposition will decrease those crimes. Even if with that increase, we are still in a better place than we were prior to Proposition 47. There is no information or objective evidence that this proposition will change the crime, the crime rate, or will address the devastating fentanyl crisis, and there is absolutely no evidence that more people will be directed into substance abuse treatment or mental health facilities because we don't have them to direct them into. What is definite and is in your report is that it will increase state prison population, mostly with Black and Latino people. It will increase local criminal justice costs. It will increase local workload in the courts. And finally, if the city wanted to educate and influence our residents on a proposition to vote on, they should have looked at Proposition 35. That is the proposition that would permanently fund Medi-Cal House Health Services. Anyone who has tried to make a doctor's appointment, especially with the primary physician, knows the difficulty that you have, and if you have Medi-Cal, it's even harder. As an OB-GYN, over 50% of deliveries are covered by Medi-Cal in this state, and yet labor and deliveries are closing every day. So if you want a proposition to influence people on, make it Proposition 35. As Mark said, people can make up their own mind about Proposition 36. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speaker card? So it's now time for council discussion. Who would like to start? Council member Chin?
Okay, sure. I'll start. Um, I'll start by saying that I wholeheartedly agree with Mayor Wu. I mean, I, I've lived in San Gabriel more than 20 years, and it's always been very safe and clean and nice family neighborhood. But yes, in the last 10 years since Prop 47, there has been an increase in crime. And I think I've, I've told most of you before that just within the last three years, my house has gotten hit three times by bad guys coming onto my property trying to steal my dad's catalytic converter. Now, in the previous 17 years before that, that's, that's never happened in my city. But, you know, things are starting to happen like that. And I, I believe that a large part is because criminals don't see any repercussions, any downside to committing crime, and there are no consequences. And I'm not saying that all consequences have to be necessarily jail time, but there needs to be the, the threat of punishment. needs to be the threat of punishment and some kind of repercussion in order to change behavior and make sure that people get the help that they need, whether it's drug treatment or mental health issues and help for that. So I mean, I think that Prop 36 will really do a good job in at least improving that kind of thing. Now, I know that a lot of anti-Prop 36 people, and a lot of times, a lot of them are California state politicians, and they're going around saying things like, oh, crime's not worse. You're just imagining it. You know, crime's better and crime's down. And the way you can tell that they're lying is that you look at where you go for shopping. Look at places like Walgreens, all of your local pharmacies, and Target. You notice that recently, they've started installing these big cabinets, locked cabinets, with all their merchandise in it. Now, if crime wasn't getting worse, why would companies start doing that? I mean, you think they like spending money for no reason? They just, you know, all right, they're gonna start locking all their stuff up because they want to? No, those things cost money, and it creates an inconvenience for their customers, which makes things harder for, makes it harder for them to do business. So anyway, I'm just looking at common sense, and that's my observations. So I'm on board with Mr. Mayor, and those are my comments. So I yield unless anyone has questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Chen.
Thank you.
So anyone else? Yes, Councilmember Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor. I too agree with supporting this proposition, and I'll give you a few reasons. As Councilmember Chen said, crime is increasing. I think it's, it's both in reality and statistics. They can be manipulated through media coverage and things like that, people's perception of reality. So when people, like the news and media are saying crime is going down, what they're not telling you, they're saying crime statistics are going down. Now, we have to realize that, who does crime statistics? It's Department of Justice. Well, guess what? They've changed how they do their statistics. So you can no longer compare numbers from old percentages to new percentages. For example, Los Angeles, Chicago, and New York are no longer a part of that number. So when we say crime's down, well, yeah, they're not reporting it to the Department of Justice. They said, we're not reporting our numbers anymore. So yeah, crime's down because we cut out LA, New York, and Chicago. And then we tell everybody, oh, crime is down. Look at the LA crime statistics. They're not down, Los Angeles area. San Gabriel crime statistics, I can pull my reports from 2011, 2012. I have all of them. It's not down. We used to have a, we get the four neighborhoods. I've been watching them for 12 years, 13 years. We get the four neighborhoods or four parts of the city split up. Here's the crimes, here's the crimes. It used to be a one-pager. Now it's five, six, you guys see them, seven, eight, nine pages. We used to have one, it would say like, there was a break-in at this, this house, or there was a car burglary, there was this, there was that. So you'd see maybe four or five, you'd see a handful in the northeast quadrant, in the southwest quadrant, you'd see a handful. Now there's pages of them. And this is, this, mind you, is with less people reporting crime. That's been shown, that less people are not reporting crimes as much. As well, officers are in the field making determination, is it worth writing up this misdemeanor that used to be a felony? So people tend not to do felonies, but now it's a misdemeanor, so they're not doing it. And in fact, some people are doing, they're getting caught three and four times a day in different cities. So they'll go commit a crime in Alhambra, not even get a ticket written, go into San Gabriel, get caught again. They're so bad at crime, they get caught three times in one day. Well, what this is doing is saying, hey, if we get caught in Alhambra, then now we're gonna start writing you up, and then that's gonna count. If you do it twice in a day, it's a felony, and we can, we can start doing that. If you try to tell me that punishment is not a deterrent, I don't know what world you're living in, and you must have never been dealt with people that have been punished before, because when you get punished, it is deterrent. And that's what this is. We've taken, we've taken this major deterrent away. All we're trying to do by supporting this, say, you know what, we should have some consequences. And what this is doing, it's taking a more measured approach. The original versions of this actually just repealed Prop 47. This took a more measured approach where it's, we're gonna create a new class of crimes saying drug crimes are going to, you have the option of doing drug treatment and combine with mental health treatment, which is, that's what we're trying to get at. We're not trying to just get punishment, we're trying to get rehabilitation. And that's what this does. It has both the carrot and the stick. The stick is stop doing crimes because you're ruining people's quality of life. You're creating lots more victims now and a lot of silent victims, victims that don't even bother reporting, as well as police that don't even bother taking in statistics. So we can't just say, oh, crime is down because some newspaper said it. We really have to, I mean, we have, we all live, we've, all of us have lived long enough to see and we can feel there's more crime, and we do take more precautions now than we would have 15, 20 years ago. So there are lots of other propositions on the ballot, but I think this one in particular affects the most people across the broadest spectrum. It affects everybody in every walk of life at all times. We really have to do something about it. And I think as a city, we can say, we as leaders urge you to vote yes on this. So I would wholeheartedly support that.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Harrington. Say who's next? Yes, Councilmember Chen.
New toys. May I make a quick comment, just piggybacking off Councilman Harrington just for a minute? He brought up a great point about the way statistics can get finagled and kind of messed with. So for example, if before Prop 47, you had, say, two robberies, and then after Prop 47, they decided to, Prop 47, what it did was reclass, reclassify one of those robberies as a, from felony to misdemeanor, then by the new definitions of crime, oh, crime went down, because, you know, one, after Prop 47, we only had one serious crime because we just changed the definitions. And that's how they finagle the numbers and kind of tell you, oh, crime is down, but it's because they took the same crime and decided, oh, it's not so bad anymore. So anyway, that's just a point. So thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Councilmember Chen. I think that I understand that Councilmember Harrington's point, it's just like we are trying to solve the problem of global warming, so we can just change the Fahrenheit to Celsius. So we just dropped in the number of that. I'm sorry, just, but okay, yes, Vice Mayor, your turn.
Thank you. Well, before I start, I just wanted to clarify, I thought as a city, we were going to avoid giving any kind of opining on any of the ballot initiatives. But I think, I guess this one is the one that you felt out of the 10 or 20, however many there are out there, this was the most important. Is that kind of the conclusion you reached?
Yes, thank you so much for that. I think this is about the attitude, the commitment for city to protect its residents. And since we have seen so many, and we understand that how hard work that our PD has been done. And I think anything that we can fix the problem, this is the second opportunity we can have it. We have spent, in the past decades, we, this is just like a social experiment, and the 10 years is proves what we have seen right now. So I don't see there's any problem for city to take a position on this, on balance, because we are not the only city to, actually, not yet, but I have seen that other cities, they have been really pro Proposition 36 because enough is enough. I have seen that so many. And this is the way that we want to deliver the message to our community. We have, we really want to make the things to be fixed. It's just too, it's just way too much, and people just cannot suffer anymore. And I understand that things cannot be really happen in just in one night. Even this is, this will be passed, become a new proposition, that will become a new bill. But to us, this is a step that we have to move. And this is showing we do care about the public safety. So that's why I seldomly will bring something like this to the dais. But I think this is really, it matters. It matters to every single person in our city. And also, I want to make sure that other city is also supporting this as well. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, so I've been on the council now as long as Councilmember Harrington, but 2017. And I can tell you, when I've had the opportunity to talk to many residents via email or in person, and since 2017, crime is, leads the pack when it comes to issues in our city. Public safety is number one, time after time after time. In my mind, I wish we can just overturn Prop 47, but we can't. I like what Prop 36 is going to hopefully accomplish, but when we talk about statistics, I just want to also remind people that there are less reporting. The number of people who are just so reluctant because they know literally when the crime is taking place, the business owners have told me that the criminal just says, well, I'm gonna get out, you know, what's the point? Why waste your time in reporting? And I think if there is any kind of decline, which I disagree with, I don't believe that's true, but even if it was, the decline is because people are losing hope. They're tired. They're just tired of this, and especially business owners who put their, their heart and soul into their business, their monies. And you just keep seeing time after time, whether it's the, the group raid or the individuals that go into the businesses or even homes now. Even some of the areas, not San Gabriel in particular, but some areas that in the past have always been considered, you know, crime was at a lower rate. It's escalated. So if we are going to give our support for anything, this would be the one. And I just want to just briefly just emphasize what Councilmember Harrington had said, that included here, it is a treatment mandated felony. That is so important because instead of just putting them in jail, you know, there are some alternatives here. And I believe some people can be rehabilitated, but you have to give them that opportunity. And we have a law here that makes all these promises, but there's nothing of substance there. There's nothing that's telling them, you must or else. And then I was shocked also, I didn't even realize this part, but it says here, add fentanyl to the list of hard drugs. I can't believe that's not even in there. Fentanyl is probably the leading killer right now, especially for our youth. So although I don't like the city in general to get involved with any kind of ballot initiatives, I think it should be up to the individual council members, individual residents. But in this case, because it's this issue that comes up time after time, at least in San Gabriel and really throughout LA County, I think it is important for us to take a stand and support it. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor? May I please address one quick thing? Just in support of you and Vice Mayor Machaco, when she asked, you know, why this particular item, and I do appreciate your answer, that, you know, a lot of times, and I've been thinking about this, a lot of times, there are many propositions, and most of the time, they're very compartmentalized, they're very specialized, that only affect certain groups of people. And a lot of times, they get very wonky and technical, and, but, but this, and this is why I appreciate your answer, because you share my view that this is an issue that affects everybody. Public safety affects everybody, and especially, you know, in our roles as city leaders and elected public servants, that public safety is most of the time top of the list, our responsibility to be able to do our best to help our residents to be safe and to feel safe. So that's why I appreciate your answers, both you and.
And I was gonna say, and I think out of all the issues that are taking place, this has to be the most, from what I've seen, nonpartisan. Public safety is important wherever you land on the range there of politics. And so I think it is very important, as you said, for us to take a stand.
Right. Okay, thank, thank you. Appreciate your support.
Yes, Councilmember Harrington?
Thinking that we might have support to pass this resolution, I do have one correct, or suggested correction on the first whereas. It says that it's led to unintended consequences, including increase of, I just say it's led to increase in organized retail theft. In my opinion, the authors of this intended that to happen.
I would agree.
We can take that out and just say, this has happened. Because to say it's unintended is to give them a lot of grace, which they do not deserve because it was an intentional thing.
Right.
I would agree with that amendment.
Amendment, right? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Harrington. You know, the time that when we had the Proposition 47, then that was entitled the Safe Neighborhood and Schools Act. So I mean, that's why I was, just like Councilmember Chen said, that this is very, you know, it's like a very, it's a very specific, you know, specify that you have to know this, this proposition is telling you the yes, then actually you say no. So that's why I have checked with other, you know, prosecutors and the legal professionals and make sure that this is the right proposition that we should, we can support.
And one more thing, if you go back to the record, we did oppose Prop 47 as a city.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
We opposed Prop 47 as a city.
In 10 years ago.
Yep.
I see.
And so, I mean, Prop 47, there was a couple of the propositions around it, it wasn't even the worst ones.
That time you were the mayor.
Yeah, we opposed it.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And Councilmember Dean?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, the mayor, to bring up this proposition, because with too many proposition, like I agree, and my colleagues say that, yeah, maybe most proposition is also affected somewhere else too. But for this one, should be nonpartisan. Only partisan, it's, it's anti-criminal or want a criminal to stay in our city, our community, right? That's only this separation for the politician. But for the party, I don't think we should be, those parties should be public safety on our city. And I agree that even sometimes they say, oh, maybe some statistics say it's reduced, but everybody have the eye. The community, you can hear about it. I, for myself, I just say, in the supermarket, I go to the visitor's supermarket, and the shoplifting, and the in and out, because the Chinese owner, they're silent. They don't want to report it. After, because I'm running, but I called out PD, but when PD can arrive, he's gone. So that's really bothered that if they lost the money, who pay for it? Owner pay for it? Finally, all the consumer will be paid for it. It costs us too, right? So, and, and our city have a lot of like Asia restaurant. I hear too many people call me, hey, your city is not safety because my, I drive in my car, I parking on the parking lot, and the, when they go out, the, the car window glass got broken, and take their purse, inside maybe have the, some cash or valuable item. So they gone. So we encourage the people coming to our city to, to have a consumer, and we can, we can make the tax revenue, but actually, we should be protect our environment. When they come in, they can see, okay, city of San Gabriel is a good place, a safety place to can go, right? So even you feel like some, like I agree that it's colleagues, yeah, maybe. yeah, maybe statistics say, oh, it's a reduced, but a factor is a factor, okay? You see the factor, I just say, current like retail would be reduced. But retail volume is still good. Why they, the retail store reduce? And the volume is still going up? Because a lot, it's in the online, right? It's same thing. So when you, when you see the, I just, for example, you see the crime rate. So now they just, the statistics, just you hear it, see the community, what they reported, okay? So I also, for the, the Prop 36, it's the last, last two, it's if people really want to help people some like just misdemeanor. I like, like a treatment, mental felony, that's a new class, to help them go to the, like treatment, right, mental health. And the last one, it's allow offender who successful compete drug and the mental health treatment to avoid jail time and have the chat, right? So, so that's like still consideration for them if they want, they really got the treatment and then come back. Don't, don't have the criminal again, right? So the one thing is just say, like, but I, I think the Councilmember Harrington's already answered. So we, we go through the Prop 66, 47, we oppose it, right? It's whole council meeting to do that, okay? Because why I asking this question? I want to asking the city attorney. So can we do that to do the, like, support of Prop 66? The council member. Yeah.
Very excited to use the new system. I didn't catch the question, are you asking me?
If, if our council member, they want a city to support, yes, for the Prop 66, so legally, can we do that?
Well, you can't spend city money to advance an active election cause. But I, it doesn't expend city money to adopt a resolution.
Okay, all right.
You're just expressing your viewpoint.
Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you for your answer. Yeah, I agree of Prop 47, then they come out, they used a very nice wording. It's a safety for our school, safety for our community. But after then, it's unsafety.
Yep, that's right.
As a result, right? So hopefully, Prop 66 can help us to adjust, do the adjustment, right?
Let me add that you also, by the way, can provide information that might be useful to the public in evaluating. And, and so, you know, the wording is basically expressing, providing information about problems we have here.
Okay, so maybe we can say the, what's the, one is, one is support, another one, just let the community, our, the community member watch out with this Prop 66. How will be effective our community, the crime rate and the public safety, something like that?
I think the best we can do is just post the resolution on the website.
Okay.
Doesn't cost us anything.
Okay.
But individual council members can use that on their own social media and with their own outreach from that point.
Okay, so we just post the Prop 66. So should we also put out that our council member, it's supported or not? We don't, current resolution just post this proposition, right?
Well, that is the support of the council. Yeah, we wouldn't want to put an individual council member. We do that on our own. I will add though, I forgot to add that the ICA already supported it as well. Just, you know, they, they had an official, we had a vote and we supported on the ICA. Independent cities.
Yeah, ICA is supported, yeah, okay. So for our resolution, I just want to clarify, it's just to post the Prop 66, let our voter to make a decision or city will?
Well, let me.
Just want a wording to clarify.
Right, for example, we, we have a yes on 36 advocates group. So they have website, they have social media. When they know, realize that city of San Gabriel is endorsing Prop 66, that will go out. So we actually will be listed with other cities that also supporting this proposition. So I personally don't think that we need to do anything further, but it's important to me that not only as an individual endorsing that, but also our city, that we take a stand, that we tell the public, we do support this. And we, as a council member, and, you know, we, we able to approach to our community and telling them, this is why we support it.
Okay, so we, actually, first of all, first thing, I don't have the, so what's the recommendation? So maybe a recommendation is, say, our council, whole council, if, if goes through, okay, the support of Prop 66 and then we provide a pro and a con for our community or what that meaning? So I still, still confused, yeah, yeah.
We just, we will just say that we're going to vote on whether we support it or not.
Okay, that's very, very simple. Should we support or not? Okay, all right, okay.
And I mean, to that end.
What's the wording, so?
That, well, it's the resolution wording. So to that end, I would like to.
Page four.
Read page four.
Okay.
I would like to make the motion to support and pass Resolution Number 24-54. But with.
Amendment.
Amendment, the Councilmember Harrington's amendment? What, please remind me what you said about, should we change a word in there?
Just removing the reference to unintended consequences. Just state the consequences.
Which one?
First whereas.
First whereas, and then, so we're going to cross out, strike, strike out unintended?
Unintended consequences, including the, so.
Include the consequence.
Whole paragraph will be, whereas the passage of Proposition 47 in 2014 led to increase in organized retail theft and difficulties convincing people to seek drugs and mental health treatment. Is that what Councilmember Harrington, that you suggest?
Yes, more factual, less forgiving.
Okay, so that, that is, that is my motion as the wording is, is adjusted.
Okay, so we have a motion made by Councilmember Chen that was amended language on the first whereas. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Harrington. Please vote.
Motion passes by a vote of five zero.
Thank you, thank you very much. Next item, please.
Mr. Mayor, we have no additional public comment.
Okay, then city managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to mention that I look forward to seeing everybody at Dumpling and Beer on Friday night, our signature event of the year. Hope to see everybody there. Woo hoo.
Thank you.
Oh, I thought that was more than.
Just Councilmember Chen editorializing.
Then council, council comments and conference meeting report. Who would like to go first?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, just a few things, this meeting. On September 25th, I attended the monthly Tri-City Chamber of Commerce event at Welby Health in Rosemead. Apparently, there's a Tri-City Chamber of Commerce group between Rosemead, Alhambra, and Temple City. And so they meet once, once a month. And so I attended their monthly event. On September 27th, I attended, I was honored to attend the annual dinner and award ceremony for the Asian Youth Center. As most people know, they do a great job and great work for our San Gabriel community. So thank you to them and thank you for having, thank them for having me. And then my final point, I hope to see everyone this coming Friday. Friday evening at the annual San Gabriel Dumpling and Beer Fest, six to 10 p.m. And with that, thank you, I yield my time.
Thank you, Councilmember Chen. And who's next?
Councilmember Ding. She could only give me five minutes. All right, all right. September 21st, I have, they said even they have three event. One is the Chinatown Service Center, the 53 Annual Gala in our city of Hilton. And another one is Chinese American Insurance Financial Professional Association. They hold on event in our Sheraton, okay? And another one, it's Lions Club, it's South Pacific in a Lions Club. Yeah, so I have chance to attend it. But first, it's definitely want to support our San Gabriel two event. And AYC, they have the event on the 27th. I have chance to attend at 37, 35, it's the hosting, the San Gabriel Hilton. And yesterday, I have chance go to the SGB car to regarding the homeless roundtable and hold by supervisor Catherine Bauer and one of the city council member, the Los Angeles and mayor of the Monovia. So, so how, it's originally, how can we help through the most should be used the county resource to help as our homeless issue? So hopefully, the, the, I will pass the information to the, our, the city manager, Mark. Okay, so maybe we can cooperate with them. And definitely for the Friday, everybody join the, our dumpling and beer celebration. Thanks.
Well, thank you, thank you, Councilmember Ding. So you have like 30 seconds more, so roll over to the next council meeting.
It's my turn.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I was going to ask Rebecca to please come up so she can share a couple programs. Is that okay, Rebecca? Great. And while she's coming up, I just wanted to share that I was, had the pleasure to be a lunchtime mentor for Senator Susan Rubio's Wings, which represents women inspiring the next generation of sisterhood. And it was a seminar. I got to meet with some young students and provide them, well, I guess I was a mentor figure, but I also gave them the opportunity to ask questions. And it's just a great program, it's an all-day program. They had 250 students and it gave them the opportunity to empower them, to give them resources, because all these kids, you can tell, are going to be very strong leaders in the future. So I was very excited. And then, thank you, Rebecca, for coming up. Can you share a little bit more? There's two movie screenings that are taking place and I was told that your department was in charge of it. One is called Dealing With Dad and the second one is called Fragmented. So I thought maybe you might want to share a little bit more about those programs.
I, I would be happy to send an email to council. Dealing With Dad, I know that we are, we are working on. That's actually an item that the here commission had looked at initially about dealing with mental health. And, and we are promoting that. I actually don't have that date, though. Maybe you have that date.
Well, I have, I have some information in front of me. It says award-winning movie, Dealing With Dad, with open up conversations about intergenerational trauma, having hard conversations and healing. And then the second one, the Fragmented, I didn't have as much information, but it is a collaboration with the Alzheimer's, Los Angeles, the Lindo Project, and the city of San Gabriel. And it's, the emotional story follows an Asian-American family as the wife cares for her husband with late-stage dementia. And more information to come. So I thought I would just, if there was more information, great. If not.
Well, I apologize, I don't have that right now. I'm happy to send that to the council, though.
Okay, yeah.
The Dealing With Dad, I believe, will be held here in the council chambers.
And the Fragmented too, it says it's going to be held here. So Fragmented is in November 16th and Dealing With Dad is October 12th. So thank you. And that's all, Mayor.
Well, thank you. Okay, so I just have just a few things to report. On September 18th, I attended the SELA County Leaders Roundtable Conference, where I learned about SE's future plans to improve clean energy initiatives and enhance the power supply. And next day, our city manager, Mark Lazardo, and our chief, Elizade, Elizade, and I attended the fundraising dinner organized by the San Gabriel Historical Association. The event celebrated the dedication and achievement of honorees including Clorox Italian Market, Mission Hardware, and Rias Insurance. On September 27th, I joined the tour with Chinese-American Elected Official Group at Ontario International Airport. So during my discussion with the leadership team, that they expressed their willingness to collaborate with the city of San Gabriel for 2028 Olympics. They have been preparing for this momental event since last year, anticipating heavy traffic at LAX during the time. So Ontario International Airport with direct flights to Asia, including two non-stop flights to Taipei daily, will serve a key gateway for tourists visiting our city. So that's, that concludes my report. Thank you. Close section, none. The next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 15, 2024, at 6:30 p.m. And meeting adjourned.